Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board. First of all, I want to thank the neighbors for coming out again. I know we have quite a bit of patience in the board counselor. We had met at a neighborhood meeting before the last meeting when we were here before you. At that point in time, we had -- well, let me back up a little bit. Historically, another proposed owner of the site or another owner of the site brought before this board a variance request to subdivide the lot and put a large two-family, two-townhouse residential structure on one of the lots and to keep the other lot the same, but it would have been an undersized lot. He withdrew that request for variance, sold the property. My client, George Lang, purchased the property, came to me. We looked at the property. We understood that it had been before the board before, and we decided to go for a finding. And the reason we went for a finding is because we felt removing a non-conforming structure and putting in its place a structure that was completely conforming was certainly not more detrimental to the neighborhood. The neighbors came out, suggested that, you know, although a single family might be okay for them, they thought an enlarged two-family was too big a structure, three stories, it was 35 feet high, three bedrooms each unit, was too much for the neighborhood. The board seemed to concur with that, and members of the board suggested, listen, something should go there. You know, I might be supportive of a two-bedroom, two-unit, two-bedroom units each, a little bit lower, without the parking underneath and parking on the side, and we may consider that. So this, now we're back with a structure similar to the structure that we came here last time with, only much smaller, only two and a half stories or approximately 31 feet high. The floor area ratio's smaller, 1,291 square feet per unit as opposed to 1,500 or 1,600 square feet per unit, and with ample parking pursuant to the zoning ordinance. So the question before you is, is a structure that's conforming in all ways to the zoning of that area substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? I'm not sure how it could be. We're taking an enlarged garage that's built, I believe even on the above the property's land, right up against the lot line is an eyesore. The property was completely covered with asphalt unsightly, and we're tearing down a non-conforming structure, and in its place, we're building a two, we're proposing to build a two-unit structure, residential structure with two bedrooms, two parking spaces per unit, that meets the floor area ratio of the zoning residential B of .4 combined with the other structure that's there, that meets the frontage requirement, that meets the front yard setback, side yard setback, rear setback, height requirement, essentially complies in all respects to the zoning of that neighborhood. You know, I heard some of the neighbors suggest, well, it just doesn't fit in that neighborhood. And we superimpose the proposed building onto the site, and this would be the proposed building, and it's actually smaller than many of the houses on that lot. This lot size is 10,609 square feet. Residential B zoning requires 3,000 square feet per residential unit. So pursuant to the zoning, three units does fit on this sub, the existing zoning. Pursuant to the zoning, the size of all three units combined should be, have a floor area ratio of .4. This combined with the one-half of the duplex on the same lot is just under .4 floor area ratio, so that also complies. Another view of the structure that would be superimposed from, you know, a little bit higher would be right here. So as you see, all these structures, it fits with the neighborhood. The lot size is ample, it complies with zoning, and it meets all the setback requirements, height requirements, open space requirements, parking requirements of that neighborhood. Now, I do understand that the neighbors don't, you know, are not in favor of this, and that they've suggested maybe a single family, you know, should go there, and I appreciate that, I really do. But two two-bedroom units on an attractive, in an attractive building with a front yard landscaped properly in place of a non-conforming structure that is right up against all the lot, you know, the rear and the side lot lines unsightly with a lot completely covered with asphalt, I just don't, I just don't see how it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. The only nonconformity that will continue to exist on the lot, and the reason why we need the finding, is that the existing structure, residential structure, is part of a duplex. And way back years ago, the owner subdivided the lot and the duplex essentially that was connected right in half. So one half of the duplex belongs to one lot and the other half to the other lot. So it's not possible to tear down half of a duplex, but should that have, if that were to occur, you would be able to construct by right three units on this site because you have ample lot size. So we were asked to downsize it. We were asked to remove the garage underneath, which we did. We were asked to maybe make it two bedrooms rather than three, which we've done. So I think this is really, you know, somewhat of a compromise between what the neighbors considered too large and what we thought was good for the site and within the law as well, and a single-family house, which we believe is not sufficient. And it's a, a single-family house, if it were a residential A zone, I could understand that, but it is a residential B zone. It's zoned multifamily. The entire street, most of which, you know, have multifamily residences on it. So while I understand the neighbors don't think it fits, it fits in most of their yards because their structures are pretty similar to the one that we're proposing to build. You know, I, the complaints have been parking, you know, where are we going to park when it plows, you know, the difficulty in plowing, parking on the street, things of that nature. But the fact is that the parking is complying with the zoning. Two units per residential structure, and we have two, I mean, two parking spaces per residential structure, we have that. So I'd ask the board to make a finding that this is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, that it does in all the regards comply with the zoning that's in place right now. I understand that there is resistance from the neighborhood. I did, I do appreciate their concerns, but I don't feel that those concerns really reflect, are reflected in what is being proposed here. It's a two-family house that is on a lot, the size of which allows for that type of structure on it.
What's the pitch on that roof?
I don't know the pitch on that roof.
It just looks, it looks high, it looks like a...
Right now, the picture, yeah, looks a little high, but we, we load the, sorry, we load one story, so originally, I got three stories in height, but right now, it's got two and a half stories.
Right. What's, what's the pitch of the roof? Seven-eleven, five-eleven?
I think seven-eleven, seven-eleven.
Seven-eleven?
Yeah, that doesn't show. It didn't show the painting. Eleven and a half, yeah. Eleven and five and three-four.
What?
I can't see the picture.
Is it wide here? Is it? Just reading my sentence.
That's a mosque.
It's a mosque.
Where's the mosque?
In the park, it's in the back.
So this is the structure, yes, and it's next to all the other structures.
It's taller than the rest of the lot.
It's really, no, it's a 24 by 15, I think.
It's 24, the structure itself is 24 feet wide and, I believe, 58 feet.
58?
Could be 58 feet long, I'm not sure. With two bedrooms. 52 feet long. So it's, the original proposal was, was 60 feet long.
28.
And, yeah. 28 feet wide. So it's downsized and was downsized at the request of the board. You know, I mean, he's questioning the zoning.
Any questions, Mike? Any questions to the applicant?
You got a question?
I don't have any questions.
You know, that doesn't look like the street. It looks like your pictures made the street a little wider than it is. That's a very tight neighborhood.
So we use the code.
You share a picture of nothing.
That's not...
I can't. It's not meant to be concealed. It's not meant to deceive anybody. The fact of the matter is, the house next door is larger than this structure. You can go online on the city's website, look at the floor area ratio of that structure. You can look at every single house, in fact, on that street, and you can see that this house is no larger than the houses that are there already.
There's no way that there's that big picture in that picture.
It's not the same size.
It has, you have the height dimensions.
How far is it from the other house?
Right, that looks...
It meets, the, the question was, how far away from the other house is it? Well, it depends on how far, whether the other house complies with the current zoning or not, but this house complies with the side setback that is required for the zoning. In other words, you need to have at least 13 feet from the side of the property to the home, and this house has that sufficient setback.
Are you saying from the existing duplex of Van Nuys to the new structure that that is 13 feet?
No, it's, it was lot line.
No, no, to my...
And whatever, whatever they have on their lot line to their house.
And in the front, it's 25 feet back from the street, and in the rear, it's plenty, it's...
You didn't answer my question.
On the, in the rear.
For both units?
For both units, yes. That was at the request of the board as well. We had the original...
What about the duplex? That's the amount. It has five units.
The duplex, first of all, Mr. Lang almost only one half of the duplex.
Right, right. Where is that other half of those?
Hey, Councilor, we're going to take five minutes once you all get together and have a chat and discuss what you want to discuss, all right? We're going to take five minutes. Council, maybe you can get together and talk if you want to. Questions and everything? So, take five, guys.
But I would make it the part of one chair.
So...
This is the board now wanting to have to make a decision.
There are too many questions.
You guys don't want to test us with a test.
That's not true at all.
You guys did just go out.
Yeah.
You guys are already speaking, right? So, I just don't know why we're even, why are we doing this? Why don't we just kind of sit and wait, and then we'll go back? Unless you have something to add to the applicant's proposal. No reason to be having... I know, I know. I know.
The red board, if the red, if the red votes, votes hands over.
If you guys are going to vote, no, they don't want to have a talk.
Like if Marty had told us, if you sit down right now, I'll vote, yeah.
I almost got her.
You have a reasonable vote, yeah.
You have my, uh, white ankle on, right?
Looking good.
You're all right, you're looking stressed, man.
What'd you say?
See, you're looking stressed.
Am I looking stressed? No, I'm stressed. I'm actually getting like super insane web traffic because of Bill Harris' motorcycle news. We're talking tens of thousands of likes. Something went national with that.
Why don't you go down there and onboard him?
Yeah, we're good.
How you doing, Ed? How you doing, Ed?
Good, thanks.
Council, you're making that, like, a call, or a couple of...
Uh, only, very briefly, I know some of the neighbors are going to be getting up. I attempted the answer of some of the questions that they had. I just asked the board to try to stay focused on whether the complaints that they have really are impacted by this particular project in terms of its nonconformity, and I would suggest that it doesn't. The fact is that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood because it fits exactly just as the other structures in the neighborhood fit, and it is sized properly for the residential B zoning, and complies, in fact, with residential B zoning in all regards, with the one exception of the nonconformity that preexisted. And we removed, we actually removed a nonconformity in what, of building it.
Thank you, Councilor. Does anyone want to speak in favor?
I know that most of the neighbors are going to speak in opposition. My name is Paul Codad. I live on C Street in Quincy, so I'm nowhere near the neighborhood. But do, having listened to the presentation of the, of Council and understanding that the builder and Council have endeavored to work with the neighborhood, and that the, that the builder has certain rights, that I, as an individual, would like to be recorded in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Second call? Third call? Correspondence from the DPW. Page 27, 2017, A3DISAT, case number Z17-16. Review submitted on the Bob Ross project, comments are as follows. Specify how much impervious area will be increased due to development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout utilities, grading range, and construction details. Three, explain how the surface runoff will be discharged and treated. Four, install survey monuments to download the public right-of-way. Monuments shall be set by a professional landscaper. Five, provide dimensions, engraved on the paving area and driveway entrances. Six, repair all utility trenches and public right-of-way with controlled density fill and improvement. Seven, upon completion of this project, add bill plans showing all utilities, building footprints, reference bound benchmarks, the final total site facilities. Right-of-way needs to be submitted along with digital file. He adds, bill plan shall be stamped and signed by a professional landscaper or professional engineer. All right, here we're going to get into this tonight. Proposer on the side. Just don't repeat what the other person said in your vote. Wait. If you're not in favor, say you're not in favor. A few statements, try to take a minute apiece, not 10 minutes each if we could, okay? So, anyone a proposer on the side? Post.
We're just trying to file a line.
File a line. We could just kind of...
So you can stay there. You can get, sorry, you can get up when you're ready.
Yeah.
Let him go first.
My name is Gregory Doyle. I review about 30 Madison Avenue as well as 7577 DISAT. My first question is, has anybody reviewed the numbers they have submitted to you?
Uh, DPW, and that's the letter they got.
No, I'm talking about the zoning.
Yes, DPW went over the whole thing.
DPW was not handling zoning, the building.
I'm not, the builder department went over this whole thing, what it was, the size, what, do you think I went out and measured it? No, I didn't. I measured that.
I'm talking about the application and the numbers that they have submitted.
Yes, I have a idea.
And to start with, their requested conditions are .24, .55. What they conveniently neglect each time that they do this is they do not add the original, which is the old half a house, a half, between the...
Oh, exactly, all right.
And when you figure the FAR, you include everything on the law.
You're saying that's not in there?
And that's not in there because it works out to be, instead of .24, .55, which does not comply with the ordinance requirements. And that statement has been made several times by the attorney. It's not only that, but if I lived immediately in the neighborhood, I would kind of resent an outsider telling me what the neighbors are bothered with. And Matt Garish has not bothered one single neighbor in 50 years, okay? So don't believe the interpretation by the proponent. Ask the people who live there what they think and what it is. So in addition to that, I don't think they really have the right to even be asking you to find it, make it find it. And I've cited this before to you. Section 3, 4, 6 of the ordinance says, "Any nonconforming use or structure which has been abandoned or not used for a period of two years shall lose its protected status and be subject to all provisions of the ordinance." And this proposal does not meet ordinance requirements, as I just pointed out to you with the .55 versus the two floors that it's in. So I guess I'll keep it at that shot.
I'm Andrew, I live at 77 Dyson Street. I found a number of discrepancies between the plans the building department has applied to the proposed development, dimensional form, and the nature of the quest and history of property documents, so I'd just like some clarification of the following. The nature of the quest and history of property states, "The owner has now resubmitted his application, removing a parking underneath on the first level resulting in a two-and-a-half level structure." Page one of the plan, which I have here, still shows and lists two interior parking spaces. I know people said, Council Falen has said they're not going to do that, but on the plan, it is still showing, and on the plan that he has is showing them as well. Additionally, it also lists the proposed three total units as three stories, not two and a half.
On the right, it's on the right, I noticed it.
Thank you. Right there, see, it's still showing a two parking space on the plan. Yep. And it lists, it's listing as three total units as three stories, not two and a half. So it's, what he's showing you on the plan is not smaller than what he submitted previously. And if the plan's what's used for future building is what gets approved, that concerns me a great deal because it's not what he's saying versus what he's actually showing. The dimensional form indicates the lot is 10,609 square feet, but page one of the plan shows the same, but page two of the plan says the lot's 10,424 square feet, which is what the city says it is on the assessor sheets. The to, so I don't know which it really is, but it's different for each.
Yeah, so 609, it's four of two feet, right? 424.
That's concerning to me because it's not, which one is it?
I have to be the 609, because it would stand by the survey.
Okay, so that's what would be used then to calculate the floor area ratio. The total floor area numbers, the floor area ratio on the dimensional forms are not accurate. You're supposed to use the gross area of all buildings on the lot. The existing building gross area according to the city is 33,308 feet. The proposed building gross area is 2,496. You add those together, you get 500, 5,800 square feet, and then you divide it by the lot area to get your FAR. If you do that, you get an FAR of .547, and it's supposed to be .4 or less. So if that's calculated out properly, as I believe I have done from conversations with people that have had a FAR, it's not meeting the requirement, it's exceeding. The dimensional form again indicates that the width of the lot is 72.98 feet. Minimum lot funds is supposed to be 75. I know we were here before and got a continuance to get that figured out, but they still haven't corrected on their dimensional form. corrected on their dimensional form.
72.5.
They didn't have, dimensional form, existing rear and side yard setbacks don't match those listed on page one of the plan. I know there was reference that there, everything's being matched, but it's not showing that on the dimensional form. The zoning code calls for minimum open space of 700 square feet per unit. Under the dimensional form, the requested conditions say 4,400 square feet, but it's supposed to be per dwelling unit, so if you did that times three, you're getting 13,200 square feet, which is bigger than the existing lot. So, obviously, that's not accurate either. I already mentioned that the page one of the plan still shows the two interior parking spots. The dimensional form lists the number of dwelling units as two, yet the plan's showing a two-unit plus the existing single family. So, I didn't know a council family was really just going to do a one-family, it was, you know, being nice to us, and it could just be two in the lot. So, anyway, I'm very concerned about the discrepancies among the forms because I think it's confusing and misleading. Last January, the members of the zoning board appealed a lot of previous owners with two withdrawer, two-unit, two-and-a-half-story, two-bedroom. That was 1,248 square feet without prejudice. This is the same size, slightly taller, and it has two bathrooms per unit rather than the one. So, I'm finding it interesting that we come back better than a year later with a very similar proposal, except this appears to be taller and have more bathrooms, and we reject it or you were allowed it to withdraw last January. So, I just don't know why this would be allowed to continue. I've already talked to you in the past about the purposes of zoning. I do believe that this building would create more of a hindrance for the neighborhood. The garage is setback, it doesn't bother the neighborhood. I think this would be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conform use to the neighborhood. I never did find out what the present use occupancy R3 and U were. I did call the building code department, and still no one was able to tell me what those codes mean on the dimensional form. So, I have a signed petition requesting that the board deny this application for a finding, so I will give that to you now. I went out again on Sunday and got signatures from the council.
If anyone signs this, you don't have to speak because your name's already on the record. Or if you want to take your name off this, we can do that. Why don't we do that?
So, I'm just asking you to please vote no tonight and deny it rather than allow it to withdraw without prejudice.
Thank you. Next?
My name is Luis Casal, and I live on 82 Dyza Street since 1969. And I see that the problem that I had in the previous cases that you have a fear of parking, and our problem, my problem is also parking. And Mr. Philan said that this project will have more spaces than most of the houses in there in the street. That might be the case, I don't know. But the problem is that all the houses in the street, all the way from 83 Dyza Street to Scumley Street, were built before there were any cars. I can give you a little example. 83 Dyza Street was built in 1880. 86 Dyza, 1888. 90 Dyza, 1890. 97 Dyza, 1900. 102 Dyza, 1890. So, they are continuing on. All the houses were built before any cars. The first car, that Ford, had a...
It's only a couple hitching posts, right?
And what I believe was 1903. So, I'd like to see, to give you an example here, a picture. This is from the library, the library. That is from 1908, Queens Center. And then in Queens Center, there was only three cars in there, and that was 28 years after 83 Dyza was built, so there didn't need no parking. So, actually today, I am, you know, the board, to consider to their knees, and look like there's going to be four parking spaces in there. But we already have now and there another, one family, there is two, one of them parked on the other side. There's another one, so it's already three families. Mr. Philan also said that if they tear their old houses down, that then could build a three-family. But it's already going to be four because two that they are going to build now and two that are in there, there's four. So, the problem is the spaces. Another problem that I see in there, I think in one of the pictures you can see, this house is right on the curb of the street. And since to the city, a figure box, they did a beautiful job in Dyza Street, new street, new sidewalks. So, what happened now is that a lot of the cars that come in Elm Street, they take Dyza Street not to go up to the Firestone Corner in there, and they go very fast. This house is right on the edge in there. The last thing that I want to say is that I plowed, you know, for many years. And when you have those small spaces in there, when you plow, you have to push it to know somewhere, and you take some other spaces. Those cars are going to end up in the street. So, my problem is the parking. One family house, I said before, and I speak only for myself, is a nice piece of land should be used. One family, I think, will be okay, will be a more car, that will be fine. But now when you have two families, there are two that are in there now, and four families are going to see a lot of cars in there. So, I ask you to deny the permission for it, the two families. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Iris. I live at 93 Dyza Street. Two doors away from this proposed development. I've been here, I think, four or five times now with also two pocket lot meetings. And every time I come here, you tell me to come back with something other than a two-family, and I know if I was a member of the board, I would feel slighted because that's all these coming back with. Across the street from this place is a three-story greenhouse that's beautiful, and this house is going to put a huge shadow across the street. Nothing's going to grow in the greenhouse, nothing's going to grow in front of Lewis's house where he has beautiful planted plants every year and spends a lot of money on them. I like the garage, I don't have a problem with it, it gives us privacy from the bank, and it's a little bit of open space. Sometimes we park in there, we get jammed. The lady that lives there always let us park there. I know that I'm constantly chasing people away from the front of my house that are constantly parked there. I put up a sign, do not park the driveway, but I don't know how to write it in seven different Asian languages, nobody can read it. And we don't need another absentee landlord who just wants to make a park. We'd like a single-family home that would enhance the neighborhood and the older houses. Not somebody who's not going to be there and then get tenants in there that I can't even talk to, and they won't move their car in the driveway when it's going to snow. They don't mow their lawn, they don't pick up their trash because they say it's the landlord, and it's, I mean, does anybody even drive by and look at this lot? I mean, really, the house, the street is so narrow, and on that street, I can run across the street. They fly down there. They're doing 35, 40 miles an hour, top two, you could sit your watch, 4:15, boom! And what's going to happen when the construction comes? You know, the heavy equipment, the bulldozing, the chipping all day. I'm not going to get any sleep on the weekends. Where are they going to park and create all this dust and all this shit? I'd have to close my windows and, you know, leave. I mean, it's horrible. I mean, just leave it alone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I'll be real short. Dominic Olympia, I live across 386 Dyza. You know, I want something to be built, and I want to see a family, I think it would be nice, but that's the first snowstorm. I have a picture on my phone where the people across next door in that duplex, okay, they're parked where the house is. There's no way to put that snow. You see, they had to shovel that themselves. There's five bedrooms on that duplex, normally hears that. The duplex has a family on one side and then five bedrooms on the other side. Where are they going to park? If that snow's being pushed, I don't know where they're going to go. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next?
Laura Iris, 95 Dyza. In addition to Dominic taking pictures, I did as well from the last storm, and the pictures didn't come out that great. But, in addition to what Dominic had said, we have, the front of the house was not plowed, the sidewalks were never plowed either, so you couldn't even pass, you had to cross into the street. It's a one-way street, it's already narrow. When it snows, it's a disaster. Having parking in the back of the house doesn't work. We already know that from existing two-family dwellings that are born there, to state from what Mr. Philan had said, that most, if not all, of the houses on the street are two-family, that's not true. There's a very good number of single families as well from the other side, or from both ends of the street. And then the last comment I wanted to make, where Mr. Philan said that it suits the neighborhood, it doesn't suit us. We've been here this is the fourth time with the existing issues, another two-family does not suit us. I strongly oppose this. Single family would be welcome, depending on, as long as it wasn't a eight-foot. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, tell me, who's your picture?
Yeah, that one. Just don't feel competitive.
Certainly. My name's John Melly, I live at 77 Dyza Street. I noticed that the attorney's picture here was rather interesting to me, talked about the conformity of this structure being, working with all the other structures in the neighborhood. I looked at it, and I'm going to ask you to take a really good look at this picture. If you look at the size of this structure here, this is the duplex. This is a small, this is the two-family house, this is where I live, this is another two-family house. They're all substantially smaller than this structure here. Even this two-family house is substantially smaller than this structure here. Talked about it being a two-family residential neighborhood, saying there's no single-family houses. This is a single family, this is a single family, this is a single family, and there are probably two more single families that you don't even see in this picture here. So, and then, and there are more single families going in the other direction. So, to say that single families are the exception on Dyza Street is not an accurate statement. There are plenty of single-family homes on Dyza Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hi, I'm Margaret Tranchello. I live at 82 Dyza Street, and I just want to go on record that I oppose to a duplex house. I would agree with a single family because you have somebody who's going to be invested in the neighborhood. We've seen the complexity of the neighborhood change throughout the years. We have so many absentee landlords and houses being rented with people that they don't even know who lives here. We have two people that are living in a rented house now that are in jail, down the end of the street, down the end of the street, we have, so, these houses are being turned into boarding houses, and it's just changing the neighborhood. You know, we invest our lives into the street. Our homes are, you know, very valuable to us. We all take care of our property, we know one another, we take care of one another. So, to see this whole thing change, you know, it's got to come to a point in Quincy where you say, what made Quincy, the neighborhoods, the people, the close-knit? It's not, it's not money, it's not, you know, making money on these duplexes and these big developments, fine, that's going to happen outside the city. But in the little residential areas, you have to keep the integrity of the community, and I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else posing ahead?
I'm 95, I go on 55 Dyza. My first concern is that when I look at this driveway, that's only one hour, so again, it's going to be, you know, you know, like, the concern for the people on the path. My second concern is the drainage out of the 55 Dyza. I have had up to four feet of water in my cellar, this town was worried about the water, which Mr. Vermont will tell you the same thing. And other than that, I just, I'll repeat everything everybody else said, I oppose it, totally oppose it.
Thank you. Counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was a board. You've seen the consistent outpouring from the neighborhood, as you know my job...
You're all getting to know each other real well. We're all getting to know each other.
Mike DeOni, you're a special guest, well done.
They know each other's middle names.
I guess my point is, you know, my job, I always felt as a board counsel was to act as a facilitator. Believe I was trying to do the math. Definitely fourth, possibly fifth time in front of this board. The message hasn't changed, you know, the unified front hasn't changed. And I picked up on what Ian said earlier, I'm not so sure that this proposal is different from what the original owner was proposing. With running the mistake of reiterating everything that was said, like I said, I feel like you've heard consistently over and over and over, but I do want to take a moment and thank the residents for staying organized, staying unified, and quite honestly, sticking up to what you believe in. Because at the end of the day, these are the people that are here, that pay their taxes, and they go about their daily life, and just for the record, you know, I have it right where I was in the beginning of this whole process, which is not in favor of this particular dwelling. They do, again, point out the fact that this has been an open-minded audience, they have not said no development at all, just a small sequence with substantially a single family. So, appreciate your indulgence today this evening, and that is all.
Thank you, Counsel. Is there anyone else closing on the side of the last call? All right, close.
Let's start at that end, man. Comments?
I, I think it's, it's two things that have stuck out of my mind, and they stick out of my mind from the last time. At the closing, you said you were aware of the previous proposal. That sticks out of my mind, that's, that's a big thing for me. You knew that there was already something withdrawn because there was big-time neighborhood opposition, and you still proposed the same thing. And secondly, I think you're using the lot size to your advantage in certain ways, and then you're avoiding, you know, talking about the single unit that's on there at other times. It's almost more, the, the previous applicant was actually probably, you know, more genuine in the fact that they were trying to split the lot to show what the actual size of where that structure would be. I, I just think it's a little bit, it's ingenuous based on that and the neighborhood opposition, I'm not in favor.
I'd fall on the substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I, with Counsel Quill, I agree it's good that you guys band together and stick up and come here for, to express what your feelings are. I think that a two-family, non-owner occupied versus a unoccupied garage is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and that's, that's why.
To them.
I didn't handle them, so what was your opinion?
Listen, everyone, just listen. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
I'd like to thank everybody coming in, it's great to see a neighborhood sticks together, and I know you've been in and out of here four or five times. You made some great points, and I'm sure everybody on this board has been by their neighborhood, it's a very close neighborhood. I went by after that Saturday snowstorm, and you're right, you can't get up and down that road. I found that the ratio lot-floor area, lot size, going from .24 to .55 was disturbing. It just, it, it's, it's too much and too small an area, and it is detrimental to your neighborhood. And once again, everybody in the neighborhood in unison is opposed to this. I'll be voting no as well. Thank you. I can correct my call.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter now, it's all right. So, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman. Regarding case number...
Go ahead.
Z-17...
One second, one second.
Sorry. The residents have suggested, so, a single family. My, my client would prefer the opportunity to do a single family than appeal the board's finding of a no vote. So, I don't know if that would require a withdrawal and coming back with a, with a subdivision plan and having a single family on one of the lots, or we would be precluded by doing, from doing that if there was a no vote tonight.
No votes for two-family, and it's just going to be substantially different than the proposal? Bring it back, a single family would be completely different proposal?
So, you could vote no, and I could still come back with a single family.
Right.
Thank you.
And that's what I, we wanted that to happen.
Okay?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z-17-16, 83 Dyza Street LLC, George Lang Vannega, for finding to demolish the pre-existing garage used for commercial purposes and replace it with a two-unit, two-and-a-half-story residential structure on purpose, numbered 83 Dyza Street, I'd make a motion to deny the requested finding. I'm sorry, deny the requested finding.
The second?
Second.
A motion, send that out there. All right, close. Someone. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.